It is now six thirty PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Votes will be conducted by a voice call rather than a roll call unless requested by a council member. This evening I've got a couple announcements and a proclamation. Council President Michelle Alexander and myself have come to a tentative contract agreement with City Manager Chad Hubel. We will present the contract for council approval at the next city council meeting on March twenty first. Also, I got an email which was really cool. I thought you might be interested in learning that the student athletes at Saint Mary's University of Minnesota were named the NCAA Division Three Team Works Service Challenge winner in recognition of their community service. The Cardinals logged over two thousand community service hours from September through November of 2021, with an economic impact on the city of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. This award places Saint Mary's at the top of all Division Three schools in the country in terms of community service. I want to say thank you to Anne Merklowitz for bringing this to my attention and a huge thank you to the Saint Mary's student athletes for their contribution to our community. I have a proclamation this evening. City of Winona Proclamation. Whereas the city, whereas the Winona Friendship Center is recognized as a nationally accredited senior center, whereas older adults are an integral aspect of our community, providing wisdom and lifelong experience that people of all ages can benefit from. Whereas the Winona Friendship Center has involved, enriched, and empowered older adults in the city of Winona since nineteen sixty-five. Whereas the Winona Friendship Center, through a wide variety of programs in education, fitness, arts, recreation, travel, virtual, and volunteer service, has enhanced the ability of older adults to remain independent so that they may remain an asset for all citizens. Whereas the Winona Friendship Center has facilitated the dignity and self-esteem of older adults, thus tapping their experience, knowledge, and abilities and enabling them to continue to contribute to our community. Whereas NCOA's National Institute of Senior Centers, NISC, is the accrediting body for eleven thousand senior centers nationwide, of which two hundred senior centers are accredited. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Scott Sherman, do congratulate the Winona Friendship Center for becoming a nationally accredited senior center in Minnesota as awarded by NISC in January twenty twenty-one, as well as the only Minnesota accredited senior center. And I call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions that the Friendship Center makes in enhancing the well-being of older adults in our community. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed this seventh day of March twenty twenty-two. And we have Malia Fox and Laura Holberg here, so please come on up and I'll hand you the proclamation. Better sign it. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your work. Appreciate it very much. Good job. And now City Manager Chad Hubel.
Mayor and Council, a few announcements tonight. Regarding the fire over the weekend, I did want to mention that, or it's important to note in my mind that there were no injuries. Chief Biddle also asked that, that I thank all the departments that were involved, there were many. But he wanted to make sure that I announce a special thank you to Central Garage for assisting with an engine repair at two AM this morning. Also, the city is working with Anova, of course, as best we can, in many different facets. I know that Lucy McMartin had some meetings today. Eric Gilbert, the owner of Fastenal, has been an outstanding.
Anova. Anova.
Anova Furnishings. Eric Gilbert, the owner, has been an outstanding community partner. Anova has, over several decades, contributed to this community in many different ways, especially Parks and Rec Department. Many of the furnishings in the park system were provided by Anova, some at a discounted rate through donations, many of it just strictly donated through projects. Most notably Sobieski Park Pavilion Levy Park. Eric's father donated seed money for the disc golf course around Eastlake. So certainly, we are more than willing to help all those, obviously, in cases like this. But we'll certainly, certainly Park Rec, do what we can within our bounds and means to help Eric and all those at Anova. City staff had their first joint meeting with BKV and ISG this past Friday regarding the Public Safety Building and Community Center. The first meeting was to gather more information regarding needs for the site. The report and blocking schematics should be completed the early part of May. I'd like to also announce that, I know that many of you know this, but in a broader sense, I wanted to announce that Malia Fox will be retiring as the Director of the Friendship Center on April first. We'll sing Malia's praises at a, at a, at a different meeting, but I do want to note that she will continue working with the city past April first in our phase retirement program. Her goal is really in that phase retirement to assist the department with the planning of the proposed community center and then the department transition. I'm very thankful that Malia is willing to stay on and assist the department. Speaking of transition, as I transitioned into my new role, I have reorganized the Parks and Recreation Department. I will not be filling the Director of Community Services. Instead, I've chosen to promote Patrick Manton to Recreation Director of Facilities, which the primary focus will be on the parks, of Parks and Rec. So our park maintenance, building maintenance, all of our facilities. I've also promoted Laura Holberg to the Recreation Director of Services in our department. The main categories of focus there is the recreation side and services we provide to the Parks and Rec Department. So it's things like outdoor rec, aquatic center, a recreation centers, friendship center, you saw tonight. And so she'll be working directly with what we consider the recreation side of our department. We'll evaluate this transition every two months and complete an annual review, really to evaluate the effectiveness of this departmental change. Saying that, we have an excellent staff across the department in Parks and Recreation and I have the utmost confidence in their abilities. And finally, all these changes are within the twenty twenty-two budget allocated for the Parks and Recreation Department. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. I will now ask the City Clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Mohler.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Iden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under required public hearings, item two point one is the facilities plan for the wastewater treatment plant?
For each public hearing, we will have a short presentation, but for each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation. Then I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address. You will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by city council. We'll turn it over to Brian DeFrang, Public Works Director.
Like to introduce FCH, probably Susan Danzel will be doing a PowerPoint on the facilities plan. She'll be doing it on the Zoom.
Thank you, Brian.
I am going to share my screen. So just, can you guys see the screen and can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. So I'm glad to be here this evening to talk about the Winona wastewater treatment plant. We just completed a facilities plan, which is a study looking at the needs for the plant. And today, we're going to talk about what the needs of the facility are, a little bit of background about the facility itself, what alternatives we looked at, and the schedule of improvements and then what that means to the sewer rates. So the Winona wastewater treatment facility has a number of improvements that are required. And one of the primary drivers for these improvements is a new total phosphorus limit. In twenty twenty-one, the city received a new NPDS discharge permit from the MPCA, which requires the facility to treat for phosphorus. Today, the facility has no phosphorus limit. Lots of other communities in Minnesota have phosphorus limits and Winona is just receiving their limit now. So what that means is the plant will be limited to discharge twenty-seven kilograms per day of phosphorus at a flow of nine point six million gallons per day, which is the design capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. The facility would have to meet an affluent phosphorus concentration of point seven four milligrams per liter. So that is a big driver for this project. There are a number of other scenarios related to phosphorus that we looked at and considered as we evaluated alternatives. So at different flows and also different expectations from the MPCA for long-term waste load allocations, we are looking at processes that can treat phosphorus from point three six milligrams per liter to one point zero eight milligrams per liter. In addition to phosphorus being a regulatory driver for the needs of the plant, the, there are upcoming total nitrogen or nitrate limits the MPCA is currently working on right now. So we wanted to make sure that whatever we looked at and considered for alternatives to meet the phosphorus, we did, we considered them with the future in mind. So what other improvements might be needed to take that next step to meet a total nitrogen or nitrate limit? So aside from regulatory drivers, the facility also has aging infrastructure. A number of the structures are original to the plant, which was built in eighteen seventy. And we'll talk a little bit about the ages of some of the components. And there are some treatment units that do not perform very well today. It's, they're just maybe not the right technology fit for the way the facility. So in addition to regulatory drivers, the aging infrastructure, we also wanted to improve the performance of the plant. So some background on the facility. The wastewater plant is located in the southeast corner of the city where the star is on the map there. It discharges to the Mississippi River. This is an aerial of the wastewater plant. And can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay. So the facility has primary clarifiers, trickling filters, solids contact tanks, which used to be final clarifiers, final clarifiers, solids handling processes, anaerobic digestion, belt filter presses for de-watering, and then dewater cake storage on site. In nineteen seventy, a lot of the plant was constructed. So these structures are over fifty years old and depending on where they are in the treatment process are in tough condition. In nineteen eighty-five, improvements were made. In nineteen ninety-two, the facility had some further improvements. And then in nineteen ninety-six, there were more significant improvements where what were clarifiers were converted to the solids contact tanks here. New clarifiers were constructed, additional solids handling processes were built. And then improvements also happened within the last ten years to a number of the structures on the site. So there are old and new structures throughout the plant and we wanted to make sure we looked at the condition of these structures and what needed improvements. When starting a facility plan and trying to decide what, how much more can a treatment facility treat, we look at the flows and loads to the plant. So we start with the population. And Winona is a little bit unique in that the population has actually decreased. So on the screen is the population of Winona since nineteen eighty. It was rising and then in twenty-ten, the population started to come down. So as we look at what the future flows and loads to the plant may be, we assumed a constant population. So we didn't assume growth, we didn't assume a decrease, but we assumed that the population was going to be held steady. So what this means for the flow, because it's not going to increase, we are holding the design flow to the plant where it is currently, the current design flow. And for loadings, we actually looked at how strong the wastewater is coming in, what that strength is, and then planned a little of industrial growth to establish new design loadings. So this is a data table that has a lot of information in it and I'll step through it. The numbers are so important, but what we're looking at is the flow in this column and then the strength in terms of biological oxygen, oxygen demand and BOD or total suspended solids and TSS. And then the upper portion of the table is the current allocation. So the commercial and residential customers contribute two point two four million gallons per day of wastewater. Inflow infiltration, so that's like rainwater that gets through the collection system contributes another three and a half million gallons per day. And then significant industrial users or SIUs have agreements to be able to discharge a certain volume and strength of wastewater. They're currently only using point seven one million gallons per day, but their allocations, their agreements allow them to discharge more. So these things total a little more than eight million gallons per day. We factored in some increases from what industries told us they needed in the future. We're coming up with just over eight million gallons, but the plant today is designed for nine point six million gallons per day. And our recommendation is to stay with the design of nine point six million gallons per day. The reason is that you don't want to lose hydraulic capacity of your treatment plant because it's hard to get that back. The MPCA, if you ask for less capacity, they're going to say, well, we're going to allow other dischargers to come and take some of the allocation that Winona had otherwise. So you don't want to give up hydraulic capacity. But when we look at the loading, the BOD and the TSS, we can look at that differently because the MPCA doesn't care what comes in, they only care what goes out. So as long as you meet the affluent limits, you can take more load. So for loading, we just looked at what is currently coming today, what the industries were projecting. And our recommendation is a much less design loading capacity than the current. So currently, the facility for BOD is designed for fourteen thousand, six hundred pounds per day and we're recommending designing for nine thousand, six hundred. What that means is that you're not over-designing or over-building the wastewater plant for a wastewater strength that's unlikely to happen based upon where the strengths are today. And that allows for a more cost-effective project. So as part of a facility plan, we have to look at alternatives. And we look at alternatives for the liquids process, which is the liquid that's coming into the wastewater plant. But we also look at it for the solids. Now, there are solids that come through in the influent at a wastewater plant, but we also generate solids through the treatment process of the liquid. We're growing microorganisms and those organisms are handled as solids and need to be thickened, dewatered, and land applied. So we looked at alternatives for both the liquids and the solids processes at the plant. We were, for the liquids, we looked at it as in a phased approach. So we wanted to make sure that we plan for the phosphorus limit with the future in mind. And so we looked at two phases. Phase one is meeting the total phosphorus limit of point seven four milligrams per liter. And phase two is then what would we add to that process in order to meet a future total nitrogen limit of ten milligrams per liter? Now, we don't know what that future total nitrogen limit is going to be or if it will be a nitrate limit. Ten milligrams per liter is a conservative estimate, so we're not, we believe we're overshooting where we would need to be for that phase two. And at the time, those limits are established and again, the MPCA is working on that right now. We'll have to revisit what that phase two might look like. So for the liquid treatment processes, we identified three different treatment alternatives that each have a different phase one and phase two configuration. So alternative one, phase one, so addressing the phosphorus was just kind of the quick and dirty, the fastest way to get the phosphorus removed from the treatment is to add chemical. So you're adding ferric or alum to the process, precipitating the phosphorus. And then for phase two, adding a process to denitrify. For alternative two, we were looking at using biology to uptake some of the phosphorus with chemical for polishing and using an integrated fixed film activated sludge process or IFAS. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that is. And then for phase two, when you have to treat for total nitrogen, you're adding media to that tank. And the third alternative is still using biology to uptake the phosphorus, following up with chemical treatment just as an alternative two, but using a more traditional approach where you have an anaerobic followed by an aeroxic zone, so an AO process. Phase two then is adding an anoxic basin between those for an A2O process, so more conventional, larger tankage. We looked at detailed costs for these options. And we looked at the phase one capital cost for each of the three alternatives, the phase two capital cost for each of the three alternatives, what it would take to operate and maintain, maintain the facility over a twenty-year period. But the salvage value is, so if we're building new structures at the end of twenty years, which is our planning period and looking at these alternatives, at the end of twenty years, something new is still going to have remaining life. Whereas if we rehabbed existing tankage, it really doesn't have much remaining life at the end of twenty years. So we factored all of these things in and looked at a twenty-year net present value. Across the board, alternative two, which is the IFAS system, has the lowest cost. So the lowest phase one cost, the lowest phase two cost, the lowest operation maintenance cost. It has very little salvage value, which actually hurts the present value calculation, but is far and above a more cost-effective option than the other two alternatives. So IFAS, Integrated Fixed Film Activated Sludge, is really trying to take a normal activated sludge process, which is pretty typical in a wastewater treatment plant, and add more biomass. So you're adding biomass in the existing footprint. And doing that, you're using more dense biology, so biofilms are going to get a lot more microorganisms in a smaller footprint. There are a number of different manufacturers. The recommendations from the facility plan is to pilot these technologies. They're a little bit newer in the industry, but there are installations across the United States. So one process we recommended piloting is NuVota. So there's a picture of NuVota on the screen. It's an organic media that the microorganisms grow in and around. So you increase the biomass in the tank and it also helps with settling, which is something the plant has struggled with. And there's another technology called Indents, which uses granules. So those are the two technologies we're recommending piloting to confirm that it achieves the treatment performance the manufacturers have suggested. And after piloting, then moving forward with design of those, of that system, an IFAS system, assuming that the pilot is favorable. And what that looks like on the site is the two trickling filters would go away. Now, these two trickling filters are not currently in service. And we did look at that, keeping them as part of alternative one, but the media needs to be replaced. And that's a significant investment to replace the trickling filter media. So in this alternative, we're able to get the, the treatment we need out of the two second solids contact tanks today, creating an anoxic zone in each one of those. And then adding a screen to retain the media in the system and adding a building for the chemical phosphorus removal. And on the process flow diagram here, what we're doing is adding media to the solids contact tank here and then using the chemical for phosphorus polishing. Okay, so switching gears, that was the liquid, now solids. So there were two major process units on the solids train that we evaluated alternatives for. The first was thickening and then de-watering. So currently, the thickening process happens before solid stabilization and digestion and then de-watering. So right now, there's a gravity thickener that does not perform well. So the solids are routed to the primary clarifiers and then to a primary thickener. And it has poor thickening, which means that the digesters and the de-watering operational costs increase. So when you have thin sludge, you have to heat more in the digesters and you have to spend more time de-watering that thinner sludge. We looked at five alternatives for thickening. Dissolved air flotation or a DAF, rotary drum, gravity belt, centrifuge, and a disc thickener. And we looked at them in a high level first and narrowed it down to two alternatives that we looked at in more detail, DAF and gravity belt. And when we looked at the cost of those two options, the DAF option, the dissolved air flotation, had a lower capital cost and net present value than a gravity belt thickener. So we were recommending improving the thickening with a DAF. And then for de-watering, there is a single belt filter press today. And because of the thinner sludge, you're seeing increased runtime and there's no redundancy there. So if there's a mechanical issue with that unit, there's not a backup besides holding tanks. So we looked at an additional belt filter press. We also looked at centrifuges and screw presses. And we visited a number of facilities around the state and actually in Wisconsin as well with these thickening and de-watering technologies as we were evaluating what might be a good fit. And the recommendation is to install belt filter presses. So stay with that technology, but add a second unit for redundancy. So we have the liquids needs, we have those two de-watering process needs where we evaluated alternatives, but the facility has other needs as well. So in twenty twenty-two, the city is moving forward with improvements, designing improvements to the preliminary treatment building. That building has significantly deteriorated electrical equipment because there's no separation between the harsh environments associated with raw wastewater and the electrical spaces. So in twenty twenty-two, we'll be designing improvements to separate those and replacing all the electrical. So that is a critical need that we didn't want to wait, wait to move forward with. And then in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-six, we have that larger project that we, that would encompass the phosphorus removal, the thickening and the de-watering, but would also include improvements to the grit removal, improvements to the primary and final clarifiers, separation in the digester building, just like the pre-treatment building has the electrical mixed in with the hazardous spaces, the digester building does as well, and biosolvent storage. And then down the road, there would be the phase two, which is the nitrogen removal project, as well as improvements to the microturbine and biogas storage. So those are planned for the future. So this is kind of a summary table of the costs of these improvements. Again, we've got the pre-treatment building happening in twenty-two and twenty-three. And then design for this twenty twenty-six project, this is the end of the project. So design will begin in twenty-two and into twenty-three and then the construction will be happening between twenty-four and twenty-six for this larger nineteen million dollar project. And then we got the two other projects hanging out in the future at some point. We just put them in twenty thirty, twenty-three, one through now. Schedule. The city's NPDS permit has a compliance schedule for phosphorus. So on this table, you'll see where there are permit requirements and then the overall schedule for the project. So the facility plan was submitted to the MPCA, it was due March first. We have the public hearing today. CDO requests placement on the intended use plan, which is a way to get additional funding for the project. We want to begin piloting in March, piloting the two different processes between March and November and then beginning design in twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. Plans and specs by permit are due to the MPCA December first of twenty twenty-three. And then the project would bid, it'd be awarded to a contractor, construction would start. And this schedule is showing that completion could happen in twenty twenty-six. The permit requires completion by the end of twenty twenty-seven. So there's a little bit of cushion there in the schedule. And the last part is the impact to the user rates. So the estimated project cost for twenty, the twenty twenty-six project is nineteen million dollars. We think there should be the Point Source Implementation Grant, PSC grants available related to the phosphorus treatment that'll range between three and seven million dollars. So today, an average residential user uses about sixteen hundred cubic feet of water per quarter in P's forty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Looking at a nineteen million dollar cost in twenty twenty-six, the future rate for that average residential customer will be sixty-nine dollars per quarter. So the, the rate increase will vary depending on the water use and heater size. So it's not across the board, everyone would pay a different amount, but it would fluctuate depending on how much water they use and what their heater size is. So that summarizes the needs of the wastewater plants. I will open it up for questions.
Anyone have any questions? Uh, Pam, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. That was, uh, that was a lot of information to take in. My simple question is, are all these alternatives equally effective?
Yes, they are equally effective. Obviously, we're recommending piloting because that is a new, the, that option we're looking at is a newer process. So we wouldn't move forward without testing it first, but it, it, it is effective. The manufacturers are standing behind their quotes at this point. So they are all equally effective. Trying to think of the word trade. I mean, there is always pros and cons and advantages and disadvantages when you look at like non-monetary factors. How easy is it to maintain? Um, what kind of redundance do you have? So there's going to be differences between them, but they'll all meet the expectations.
I guess, uh, since this is, um, quite a bit cheaper, less expensive than the other options, uh, do we have a lot of solid models for other communities that have, that have done this IFAS technique and that it's working well?
Yeah, there are a number, um, around the country. You know, I mentioned there are a few different manufacturers for these processes and each have a handful of installations, um, some dozens. But it's, it's kind of the wave of the future. Um, right now, it's, um, the industry is heading towards these intensification processes, which you're really trying to get more treatment out of existing footprints. So the IFAS is one of those intensification processes and a lot of, um, wastewater facilities are starting to look this direction.
Kind of follow up on that question, Pam. We will be interviewing several places that are using these systems, talk to them in person, find out what their success rates are. We are not going to install this without full confidence that it, that it works, which is also the beauty of the piloting. So we'll actually have this in our plant for three months, both the Indents and the Nuvota process, to find out how it actually works with our treatment plant and in our environment, our cold weather. So like I said, we're not going to just throw this out there and hope. We're going to definitely bet it.
I wouldn't expect that, but thanks for your answer, Brian and also Susan. Thank you.
Michelle, you had a question?
Yeah. Uh, Susan, thank you. That was extraordinarily detailed and, um, far more information than I was capable of fully understanding. So what I'm hoping is that you would be able to send that to Brian or have Brian send it to us so that we can look through it and try to grasp our hands around some of the, the numbers and the load capacities.
And, and Google a few things?
Yeah. Just so that I can be more. Okay, thanks. It's, well, I, I didn't want you to like, I wanted you to email me something. I didn't want you to print it. But, you know, since we're talking about being green, so, uh, but thank you. It was, uh, very detailed.
Steve, go ahead.
It's 300 pages, but having a hard, having a hard time understanding page one. I wouldn't, I wouldn't possibly want to question your numbers, but one thing that, that stuck with me on your, your, some of your initial numbers when you're talking about capacity. I, uh, somehow the, the capacity, uh, 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 numbers stuck with me and I want to ask, are we sure that we're, 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 we're looking at past trends, what, what growth might have been? And I understand our population is, is declining a bit. But, uh, have we built in enough excess capacity in there with what you're recommending? That, that if we did somehow grow or, or somehow our, our, our wastewater amount increased, that the plant would be able to handle that?
Yes, we have factored that in. So from a hydraulic standpoint, you know, we've got a good cushion there because you're not near the design capacity of the plant. We're not going to change that. From a loading perspective, we are recommending a decrease to the current design capacity. And a lot of the allocation is tied up with existing industries. And so that offers a good cushion as well. We don't know if those existing industries are going to produce what they have historically. And there is the ability to, to work with those industries and say, well, you know, do you really want it 2,000 pounds per day of, uh, loan capacity? Um, because the city has someone else who wants it. So there's a cushion built in with the industrial users.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I have one question in regards to the cost of the average water user. Is the $69 that's forecasted, uh, I believe you said 2026, is that forecasted based on the 19 million?
Yes, and it factors in the other elements that the city has in their CIP already. So includes the pre-treatment building improvements for 22 and 23, as well as other needs on the collection system and the wastewater treatment plant side.
Okay. Uh, another question, and this might be for Brian. Do, do we have potential other funding sources besides that, that one grant? I mean, automatically, I'm thinking infrastructure bill. Susan, have you seen any other examples of that?
Yeah, so there's the opportunity to go for a bonding bill, part of the, the Minnesota bonding bill and get money allocated that way. So that is an option. Um, there's the Point Source Implementation Grant that I mentioned. There's also a Green Project ReServe where if you're doing some energy efficiency upgrades, we can get up to $1 million through that program. And, um, lastly, you know, just the facility plan in and of itself opens the door to use PFA, uh, financing, which is a low-interest loan. They've been at one to one and a half percent interest, so that's another option. It's not a grant, but it's a low-interest loan.
Okay, so there is potential other funding sources that would bring that cost down to the, well, the average user of water within our community?
Yeah, we'll help bring the cost down. Yep.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you. George?
Uh, Michelle, were you asking for a report of the information you gave us tonight? Yeah, I would like to have that report as well too, if that's possible for the material she presented.
Yeah, maybe just the PowerPoint, if we can get that as counsel so that we can kind of dig through it a little bit better.
The, the entire report is currently on our website. That was posted about a week and a half ago. So you can read the entire thing there. Uh, Susan can certainly pu- push the, uh, PowerPoint my way and I can forward that to you.
That's what I'd like to see, yes, her PowerPoint, so.
Okay.
And then just one other question related is, uh, our biggest wastewater user, is that still malt Europe?
Correct. Correct. Yep. And, and speaking of Steve's question earlier, there's about a 50% capacity built into where we would be with this. So yes, they, they, they could increase BOD on some of our users. You know, and that would be, you know, say we got closer to the capacity limit, that'd be a discussion we'd have to have a council on whether to increase the size of the plant, how to deal with that, maybe have that user do a pre-treatment. There, there's ways to address it.
Okay, that, that helps. Uh, because when, when I, when I've been there, they, they said that we were at only 50%, but then I'm, I'm hearing the presentation that we're, we're building in a, a much smaller tolerance. So I was, I was not, I was not able to match those two things up.
Yep, and Paul could speak this way better than I could.
Okay.
Your plant runs a lot more efficient when you're designed closer to the actual amount that you're getting in. So bringing that closer to the amount that we'd be bringing in, actually it'll help the plant's efficiency. That's correct.
All right, good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Susan. I will now open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to come forward to speak on the matter? Again, I will ask, does anyone from the public wish to come forward to speak regarding the facilities plan for wastewater treatment plant? And lastly, does anybody from the public wish to speak in regards to the facilities plan for wastewater treatment plant? Hearing no one, I will now close the public hearing.
Uh, I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Susan.
Under petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the license agreement for the Midwest Music Fest.
I'd move approval of the license agreement and authorize administration to execute.
Second then.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam this time. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Midwest Music Fest.
No, to approve that license?
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is the temporary wine and malt liquor license for Cutter Schools.
I'd move approval of that license, or I'll second to George.
Okay, motion from George, second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Muddled Time.
I'd make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Amy Jo, would you care to tell us about Muddled Time, please? I'm going to bring you up. Sorry, you're here.
Hi. Do you need my address and all that? No.
Only for the public hearing.
All right. Well, I am taking over the former Oaks building and putting in, um, a wood-fired pizza and appetizer with craft cocktails, wine and beer. So just trying to take that beautiful space and bring it back to life and add to our already growing downtown and offer some new things.
Awesome. My wife and I are super pumped. We're excited for you and we're looking forward to it.
The response from the community has been really nice.
Absolutely.
When is your projected possible opening date?
That's a good question. Um, because of COVID and all things, equipment supplies are really in the air. So I was shooting for April, now it's looking more like May. But, um, hopefully soon in the next few months. So we're starting, um, the construction of the space where the pizza oven's going to go. And so I really don't have to do a lot to the space, but the few pieces of equipment that I do need are just kind of up in the air right now as to when we can get them. Yeah, and I'm hoping to kind of do some, um, exterior uplifting of that space as well, so.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy Jo. Any other questions for her? George?
Yeah, Amy, just thank you. Uh, you're not afraid to take a chance. And thank you for your investment into downtown Winona. Very much appreciated.
Thanks. It's been fun, 18 years of doing businesses downtown.
You made it through a fire even.
Yeah, right.
So anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is the Woodlawn Cemetery Association request. Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. We have Tim Leahy from Woodlawn Cemetery here, and we also have Assistant Police Chief Eric Engrave. Hi, Tim.
Good evening. So I'll promise I won't be as long as the previous presentation.
Not as contentious, maybe.
Basically, uh, you probably have seen the letter that we submitted in regards to road closure. Um, we're pretty excited. We're having an event for, it's going to be a veterans memorial site within Woodlawn Cemetery. So the event is on June 18th, which is a Saturday, and we're hoping for a road closure to keep the safety and been working with the police department to make that happen, so. I answer any of your questions if you have.
Very good. Any comments or questions for Tim? Or Eric? Eric, go ahead, please.
If I could just expand on that a little bit for Tim?
Yeah.
I think, um, what would be appropriate for public safety is we don't necessarily need a road closure so much as just, uh, your approval to, to entertain some limited access to, uh, just local traffic and any traffic associated with the rental of Paul Singer Lodge during those hours. Uh, we feel that if we could limit that traffic to that only, uh, we could provide, uh, safe egress and in and out for all the people that want to be in attendance there. A lot of them will be walking, um, because the parking is limited. And, uh, we just thought if we could limit that, that street from Clark's Lane to, um, to Huff Street on Westlake Boulevard for those hours, that would improve it greatly, our opportunity to have safer, you know, safer pedestrians walking along that. And, uh, so that, not necessarily a closure, but just a limited traffic for that.
Sure. So officially, we're closing it, but technically, we're going to allow local traffic.
The spirit would be to have some barricades up, yes, and then we'd have police reserves on both ends.
Okay.
If you lived in that area or you were visiting graduation parties at Paul Singer,
Yep.
on your way, nice and slow pace, please.
Yep, and is the lodge rented out that day? Okay, very good. All righty.
Aaron, I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Um, so then the thought is to have people park along that, that street on both sides or just one side or?
That's a great point, Aaron. For, well, let's, let's look at the parking as in the totality of it. Tim has invited 900-plus guests, um, some dignitaries, uh, some VFW groups and American Legion groups. If they're coming in by bus or coming in by a commercial van type of thing, uh, those units, we're going to have parked near Sugarloaf Ford and in the Winona Mall parking lot. And we're going to shuttle those people up to keep those, those larger vehicles out. If they're coming by personal vehicle, ideally, my thought was to have only parking on the north side of the street. That leaves plenty enough room for emergency vehicles if there's a reason to. Um, we, you know, we start putting them on both sides, now you're encroaching a little bit. So we're thinking just north. Okay, that answers my question. Perfect.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Just want to say thank you for bringing all those people to town. It's going to be, they're going to be buying food and staying in hotels and spending money in Winona. And they get to see the beauty of Woodlawn all at the same time. So thank you again for that. Appreciate it. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Item 3.6 is the appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission.
I move approval of Dr. Scott Hannan to that commission.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any questions? George?
Uh, very good appointment.
Absolutely. I agree.
Good.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the city manager's recommendation for the 2022 South Baker Street reconstruction project.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Ryan, I've got a few questions for you, if you don't mind. Um, as you, as we indirectly spoke today, um, couple of quick questions. So it was brought up to me, uh, by a concerned citizen, that there is potential possibly for, uh, reducing lane width and possibly parking stall width, uh, down to 11 foot on the lanes and seven and a half foot on the parking. Uh, I don't know what you call it, parking width. Um, and then also, uh, noticed that there was not a cross-section within this plan. And this person referred back to the, the comp plan that we had in place right now. And I just want to read one, one quick piece. Most of Winona's older streets are 40 feet wide, but many of them are effectively narrowed by the amount of on-street parking they accommodate. Most newer streets serve larger lots and they have little on-street parking. The result combined with the lack of sidewalks, that's not in this case, but is a local street that is oversized for the traffic levels it accommodates. An overly wide street results in additional stormwater runoff, encourages higher traffic speeds and is not safe or comfortable for pedestrians. So basically, my question is just, are we, uh, from my understanding, this is a state aid street and the state, Yep. uh, the state, um, considerations are different than what we have in our complete streets package that we adopted, what, 2018 or something like that, I think, 2017, 2018? And also, um, a little different from what's in the comp plan? Can you kind of explain the state aid street process when we're doing a full reconstruction like this? Sure. Are we looking at how we can blend into and what potential cost savings might be for the local taxpayer when we're redoing these?
Well, there is no cost for the local taxpayer. This is completely paid for by state aid.
Right, state aid, yep, yep.
As far as that goes, that's, that really isn't a consideration.
Okay.
The consideration is, you know, we take state aid money, we have to play by state aid rules.
Yep.
Um, speaking of the complete streets, state aid has not adopted the complete streets plan. If we went with that, they would say, uh, sorry, but we can't get your money.
Understood.
So, you know, as far as that goes, as far as the section, you, you've kept the same section, correct? So what, what's there now is more or less what you're going to see in a much newer, better condition after the project's done.
Sure.
That way, we keep the boulevard width, we can grow. That way, we keep the boulevard width, we can grow trees, people have a little bit of a front area, all that kind of stuff. And being, it is Baker, there's the high school on one end, there's QuickTrip on the other. We didn't really want to widen it because now you just developed kind of like a little bit of a racetrack for drivers that just got their license.
And a weird railroad crossing, a forty-five degree there.
Extremely weird railroad crossing. So those were considered going into the project.
Okay.
That's the stuff we look at when we design. You know, if you have cars parked on both sides, which you get close to the high school, it's a natural slowdown for those drivers. So we didn't want to widen it and say, yeah, I can go thirty-five, forty with all those pedestrians in that area. We wanted to keep it kind of crunched to slow traffic down near the high school.
Sure, okay. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is the 2022 South Baker Reconstruction Project feasibility report and resolution order, ordering a public hearing.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the correction of addition to the M S A S system.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Council concerns.
We'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a good news tonight and a sad news tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate Ed Mohan on his retirement from Shot Beverage for many, many years. Shot Distributing served as a sales rep and built a lot of very good working relationships. So upon his retirement, I believe the city clerk now, which this is her husband, she'll put the vacuum cleaner away, and Ed will be doing all that work. So, so congratulations to, to Ed on his many years of great service in the beverage industry. And also, just on a sad note, I would just like to offer strength and wishes of good health to park maintenance employee Mike Durnan. He was diagnosed with an illness here, and we wish him well as he goes forward into his wife and, and the children, and also to his parents, hopefully on a strong and quickly recovery. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I received a phone call before I got here, and this person was quite insistent that when they come back from Florida, the weather be nice. So they asked me to make a motion. I didn't think I could do that, but I did say that I would, in my comments, mention that we would try to have nice weather when they return.
I think that falls under my purview.
Yeah, that's why I say this.
Yeah, I'll reach out and make sure we do that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember item.
Yes, thank you. I just would like to invite everyone to head over to the Winona History Center where there's an exhibit called We Are Water. It's been brought to town by, well, it's kind of a cooperative kind of exhibit. It has to do with, with the southeast Minnesota and our own local area, the way we handle water. It's quite, it's quite interesting and engaging on many levels. There's a lot of things to play with, including a Lego, a big Lego set that illustrates the whitewater river valley, and a little game you can play and try to be a, try to be a profitable farmer and still, still make all the, the right moves for conservation. Lot of fun. Not to mention, there are quite a few of our, our community members who have, have participated and have contributed their stories, their own water stories. So get on over there. It doesn't cost anything. It will be at the History Center from now until April twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth.
Very good.
That's all.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Muller. Okay, Councilmember Young.
Nothing at this time.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Rupinsky.
Just want to say congratulations to Lydia Sobek. She is a young lady in the Winona area who has done very, very well in the snowmobile races. The I five hundred, which is a five hundred mile snowmobile race, and a few other ones,